I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. This morning, before we get started, I'll be leading us in the invocation. And Commissioner McCann, if you would, please rise.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you today with thankful hearts and being grateful, Lord, for how well we've been blessed, how well you've protected us, Lord, and how well you have blessed over us. Father, we live in a location with a people that we often take for granted. Father, we ask you now to watch over us. Give us discernment in the decisions that we make today. And Father, we ask for you to watch over those that are in need. Father, we know that you can bless, take care of, and heal their hearts. Father, we ask you to forgive us where we failed you, and we'll give unto you all the glory. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, again, good morning. Appreciate y'all coming here to be with us today. We've got a little bit of a lengthy agenda, but we'll move through it pretty quick. I do want to give special recognition to a good friend of the court that's here today, one of our fellow contemporaries, Tiger Worsham. Commissioner, we're glad to have you with us today.
Glad to be here, good.
Longtime friend of the court. But the time is 9:02. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting in Commissioners' Court on March the 5th, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing now, Judge, I move we approve the minutes of the Commissioners' Court regular session from March 5th, 2024 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Steady to approve the minutes of the March 5th, 2024 Commissioners' Court meeting as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on a request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Sessary Collector.
Good morning. I have four refund checks for court approval totaling $37,047.24.
Court, questions, comments?
I see all these were agreed judgments.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Entertained motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Sessary Collector as presented. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now we get to the good part of the show. Item number three is consider and discuss a presentation by Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins &amp; Mott, LLP, for the delinquent, for the collection of delinquent court fines of the Justice of the Peace Courts. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge McKinnon. Commissioners, thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Doug Burnside, and I'm a partner with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins &amp; Mott. I want to start with introducing the team that we have here also. We have our director of client service, gotta make sure I get the titles right, Melissa Pace, and she can be the person who interacts with your court clerks virtually every day. And I have Scott Muha, who is our, I think, Director of Business Development. He's got his client liaison here, but he has a little higher title than that. And of course, also with us today is the aforementioned Tiger Worsham, we're proud to have on our team. Oh, sure.
There it comes. Okay.
All right. And there's, I guess someone else was sure that, yes, we can go to the next slide, which is basically our team, which we introduce the people who are here and the others who aren't, and these are a lot of people, the ones that you're not seeing are the ones who are in the back office, and they're the ones who making sure all your data gets loaded and that we can do all of our operations. Those are the directors who do that. All right, the next slide we have is, this is a snapshot of the collections that we've done for all five JP courts, and this is over the history of the contract that we've had since we've been doing collections. We have, you know, a little more than seven and a half million dollars has been turned over us for collections, and we have actually collected 3.263 million and amount resolved of just under 2 million. An amount resolved is fine reductions, dismissals, community service, or just cases that the court recalls, whether they're sent to us in error and shouldn't have been sent, or for any reason that the court decides those fines shouldn't be collected. How have we gotten those collections? Well, we've mailed out almost just under 100,000 letters, kind of wish we would have gotten 17 more in this timeframe, so we could have had that six-figure number. You know, one of the ways that we have to communicate with letters, if it comes back, we've got to find where those people are, because as you know, and we're seeing on the later slide, traffic tickets are given out all over the country, and so we want to make sure we get that. So we've, you know, updated 12,000 addresses, and we've made almost 50,000 phone calls. All right, next slide. That's for JP 1, what we've done for them. Just under 2 million dollars turned over, collected a little over 900,000, 25,000 letters mailed, and almost 14,000 phone calls made. Our next one is going to be for JP 2, and that's Judge Pollock. And we've actually been collecting, one of the reasons why the numbers here are so much larger is we've been collecting for JP 2 since, I believe, 2012, and the other JPs, 1, 3, 4, and 5, since 2017. So that's why these numbers are a little bit larger. But again, a little over 3 million turned over, just under half of that's been collected, 44,000 letters mailed, and 16,000 phone calls made. So we're, you know, making the communications with your, the delinquent, what are they? Defendants, I guess is what we call them. What is the politically correct word now? Defendants, okay. I know we've changed a lot of these terms for softer, gentler collections. Again, Precinct 3, 800,000 turned over, 265,000 collected, total liquidation rate of 62.1%. Letters mailed, verbal contacts, you can see all that information there. Going through this pretty quickly, just because a lot of it's just, I'm not wanting to read the numbers to you, and you said you had a big agenda today, so I have a little respect for your time. Again, we can see on Judge Adams, too, for Precinct 4, not, you know, a smaller amount turned over to us for JP 4 the last five, seven years, but still doing a good job of collections, 41% collected, 62% liquidated. JP 5, JP 5 shows a very high total amount liquidated. They, over the last year, have had a project where they've really tried to get rid of and purge all of the old stuff that's deemed uncollectible. When we make, we find out people are dead, we make sure we get them purged off the rolls, and JP 5 has done a, has made a concerted effort this year to clean up their, their roll. And finally, this is a slide that shows what we've done specifically in the last 12 months. A little over 500,000 was given to us for collections. We've collected, you know, almost half of that, and, or almost 255,000, we don't mean we collected that 521,000, but overall, the roll, we've collected 255,000. A little over 400,000 has been resolved for a total liquidated amount of 650,000. The more significant number is over on the right-hand side, where you see, you know, 521 turned over, and we resolved and paid 658,000. So that's an overall reduction of the overall roll by more than, by about 140,000. So that's kind of what we want to see, so your roll's not growing, it's shrinking, and that's the objective of our collections. Okay? Next slide is where the top 10 zip codes of where your debtors are this year. Last year and in the past, Athens has almost been number one, but right now it looks like the Gumbertl City zip code has jumped ahead for total number of citations just by a little bit. Southeast Dallas County fell off the map, but now we've had a little few more around the area. So that's just where your most number of debtors are. And the final slide's just kind of more of an interesting thing than truly informational, where they are across the country. Virtually every state, we've given tickets out, and have been turned over for collections. We're still missing Idaho and North Dakota, so might need to have the Tourism Bureau's kick-up efforts there, but again, collections are being made all over the country. It's one of the reasons why these collections are so hard, because once they leave the county, it's really, really hard to enforce collections on them unless they voluntarily pay. Any questions?
The, over the years, it has become more difficult with changes in statute to impose fees, to impose fines and things in these situations.
Yes, sir.
Therefore, reducing the amount of quote-unquote "income" or revenue from these sources. Across the state, when you look at these type of collections, does Henderson County fit the industry standard on collections? You know, how do we do in comparison?
And now, keep in mind, for the collections that I'm aware of, the numbers, I don't look at the current stuff. They have a certain period of time to pay their fines and fees before it gets turned over to us. But as far as the collection rate and the numbers, Henderson County is one of our highest collected. I'm not sure what the secret sauce is here, because we do the same thing everywhere else, but the debtors here seem to pay at a higher rate, because that overall, you know, when we look at the overall cases resolved and paid, you're, you know, looking at 68%, 69%. That's a very high number for fine and fee collection. As far as overall volume, you know, statewide, it's gone down, because, you know, there's fewer and fewer fines being assessed. And, you know, and then also with collections, you know, we no longer, we used to have, you know, warrant roundups twice a year, where, you know, concerted effort to go out and arrest the debtors who weren't paying, but now it's more of a warrant resolution to where we get people, they're attempting to just try to get them to pay without actually putting anyone in jail and not add more fines onto them. So it is a trend.
That's something that we've noticed in our budgetary process for a number of years now, that given the change in the statutes coming out of Austin, it makes it more and more difficult for the judicial system to carry its weight, or shall I say, fund its operations, where originally, that's how they were set up.
Sure.
And there's a whole long discussion about, courts are not meant to make money, but there is that operational concern with these changes. So, Court, comments?
How do we get some of the others to look like the five, where it's got a lot of it resolved?
Well, again, that was one of the things that their clerks, their judge has done, is to make sure that, Melissa, you want to speak on that? Where they've gone through and they've purged their old records. And it's not that the money's coming in, it's just that they're, they've been deemed uncollectible, and so they've removed them.
Yeah, I don't know that, add a lot to that, but the law was passed last legislative session, which made it a lot clearer of what courts can do with some of those very, very old cases that they deem are not collectible anymore. Because there was a point where you really couldn't, quote-unquote, purge cases, right? But it's, you can now, so a lot of courts are going back to, I mean, if you've got a case from 1995, which we, we have some turned over to us, right? If we've worked it three, four, or five years, the court's not getting any resolution at some point, they're just wanting to get it, you know, off their books. So we're seeing more and more courts that are doing that, and a lot of them are keeping maybe a backlog of about five to six years, depending on the judge and kind of what they want to do as well. So I think, yeah, that's what they did, is they just went through, and now how they deemed that or whatever, I'm not really sure, but it is becoming a very common practice now.
That particular court did have a lot of the cases from when we dissolved Precinct 6 and moved into the...
It was combined with 5?
It was combined with 5. And yes, there had been multiple, been three judges since then, and all of them had worked to bring those down. I had to guess, there were still quite a few of those in, because we did away with Precinct 6 and 11.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that probably would have accounted for a lot of it.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's no revenue involved, but it is getting rid of it and allows them to work what they can really work and allows us to work what we can really work, so.
Court, further questions or comments? Well, thank y'all very much. Appreciate y'all coming and giving us our annual report. Always learn a little something new with it. I say, you know, we appreciate working with y'all's organization, even if you do bring in old commissioners.
Associate with scoundrels.
I admire your mural and your...
Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate the time.
Item number four, consider and take action on relocation of activity site of the Master Gardener Association located at the Regional Fair Park. Court, you will see in the backup here, we have a letter discussing this from the chairman, Mr. Cliff Smith, and how that the discussions had taken place between the Fair Park and the Master Gardeners about moving their facility on the location. We've got Howard with us. Howard, if you don't mind coming up to the podium. Howard Callaway, as you know, is our manager out there at that facility, and kind of give us a rundown on it.
Good morning, Court. The senior citizens that are in the Master Gardeners there, they have, currently, they have a compound there that's, that's kind of located close to one of our RV lines, and it's a balancing act between shows and their little seminars and stuff that they give, so that they don't kind of overlap each other. But my understanding is the Master Gardeners have been given another greenhouse, and that green, they needed some more territory for that, because they currently have 112, four-sided little compound there that they're operating out of, and that greenhouse is 120 foot long and 30 foot wide. So the only way to be able to place that in there without it being in the way is to move them. So we advised a little plan to move them closer to 317, to the west, down in that corner, and that little area would consist of 190 foot wide by 190 foot long. Their fence that they had built around their little compound that they have now is 448 foot long, if you stretched it out straight. And we offered to help them move that to that facility that we're talking about moving them down there to and place that back up. They first wanted to come in off of 317 with a culvert and a gate. Their little compound that they have has two 16-foot double gates in it. So rather than them put a culvert and come off of 317, we have an inset entryway down there. We're going to cut the fence there and put one of the gates in so that they could use during, during the week, and we're going to put the other one on the inset of the fairgrounds property there, so if they have a seminar or something, they got plenty of parking, and they can access their little compound right there, and it's plenty of room by measuring it out like that for their new greenhouse and any kind of renovations that they may do in the future down that way. And that gets their cars and stuff off the highway instead of standing out there trying to unlock a gate and being, taking a chance of somebody getting in a bind. And it kind of gets them out of our 10-year plan for other RVs. We're adding, we've added in the last couple of weeks, 20 different RV spots, and that area that they're currently at is kind of in the plan for another 30 down the line somewhere. And it's kind of a win-win for everybody. It puts them down there, they're kind of isolated, and they don't have to schedule their seminars and stuff around the big shows that are choking them down and parking around them that we have, and it's a little easier for their, their calendar and stuff as well as ours.
So essentially, we'd move the whole facility, they're going to move everything.
That's correct.
Down to the corner by 317, and they would be able to access their location through, through a gate.
Yes.
And then they wouldn't have to be coming through the gate, coming through the fairgrounds, coming through, they'd be able to just totally enter their, their facility without coming through any other part of the fair.
That's correct.
Is 190, you said 190 by 190?
Yes, sir.
What do they have right now?
112 by 112.
Okay. And is that, is that 190? Does that go all the way back over to the, to the other fence, or?
So where we get 190 at is the driveway coming out 2317.
Yeah.
If you start about two foot on the inside of that, and you measure to that side fence that cuts that property off next to that brick house there, that's 190 foot.
Okay.
And then you take from that line, and you measure to 317's front gate there, it's 190. So discussing it with them and all that, and looking at the measurements of the new greenhouse, because it has to have, it's a big one, and it has to have a concrete footer around it and all that, that gives them a room to do that, plus continue to maintenance it and mow around it and all that other stuff, and put up the little greenhouse that they have. And they've got some aquatic, some kind of aquatic deal that down the lines that they're talking about placing out there, too. But that gives them room to park, gives them room for growth and what they're doing, and they're down there standalone by themselves, and the way that we'll, that, that inset gate is designed now, we have some repairs to do to it, so it's not like we were not fixing to do that anyway, so we're just going to cut it and put their 16-foot gate in there so they can enter in and out during the week there. During a show, a seminar, where they need more parking room, we'll just open that gate. They'll have another gate on the inside of the fairgrounds, they can park over there, they don't have to walk back out by the highway, they can enter on the inside there.
This seems to be like a win-win situation for both of us.
Yes, sir, it is.
I mean, they're getting a lot bigger area and a lot better place where I thought probably should have been all along.
Correct.
Down by the road. I know we have a county agent who's in charge of the Master Gardeners. Is this, is it, would you please stand?
If you would, please come forward, Chief.
Sorry, I got stepped on by a steer.
So, yes, this is a win-win situation for both parties. The Master Gardeners, you know, they, right now, we're short on, on area, and this will be amazing for us in order to grow and improve our systems. Like you mentioned, they, we have a hydroponic system that's, that's planning on coming in and adding to, and then as far as all the scheduling goes, I mean, it's, we don't have to worry about the big shows that the fairgrounds has. We can have our own little seminars when we need them and when we, when we can't. So it's, I mean, I agree, it should have never been positioned where it is currently, and it's going to be a lot bigger, better facility for the Master Gardeners.
Do you want to state your name?
Spencer Sims, and I am the new county extension agent. I've been here...
I didn't know who y'all are.
I have been here for a couple of months now, so December 1st was my first day.
Court, any other questions or comments?
And through y'all's discussions, Howard and Mr. Sims, all the Master Gardeners, this is something they want to do also?
Right now, we, you know, of course, we've got a couple of members and stuff that don't want to move and everything, but in order for the Master Gardeners to continue to grow and thrive like they plan on and want to, it's, it's, it's got to be done. It's, it's one of those, and Howard's done, said that he would help us move a lot of the stuff with their equipment, so it's, I mean, it's, it's a good, it's a good situation to be in. But majority of the ones that we've talked to, everybody's on go, wants to move. I figured it'd be fighting tooth and nail, but everybody jumped on board and said, let's do it. I said, all right.
Is there water, is that the entire facility?
We will do our own water meter, and then, of course, this new greenhouse and everything, we'll have to look, I don't know if we have, there's gas or anything like that, we'll have to get a propane tank and stuff to run the heaters for the greenhouse and everything. But the plan is to, we do our own water meter and everything there at 317.
Anything further? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Entertained motion if there's nothing further.
What do, we just need to make a, make the motion to approve the...
Mr. McKinnon, attorney?
We have existing contract with the Henderson County Master Gardeners on this. What I would propose to the court, if you're entertaining doing this, that we go back through that process of redrafting that contract, because obviously we'll have to, we're changing the description of the property that we leased to them. Did they pay money for that? Because the original contract had fees in it that they were supposed to be paying, so I mean, I, I think if, if court, seems like that's the road it wants to go down. The other thing is, you know, we are, or Mr. Sims say that some members didn't want it, the majority of them did, which kind of sounds like, paraphrasing what he said, and that's the other thing, you know, we need to have somebody sign on behalf of the Henderson County Master Gardeners, and a contract, of course, represents that they have the authority to bind Henderson County Master Gardeners to agree to this change. So, so my suggestion would just be that we go through that contract process, we get the contract done first, come back, re-present it to the court, so the court can approve the agreement.
Was our original agreement with the Master Gardeners or with the extension service?
Henderson County Master Gardeners, I believe.
We might need to look at that, if, if there's, if there's been any monies exchanged that hasn't been approved by all of us at the fairgrounds, it would have been somewhere else that I'm not aware of.
And I say that, no, it looks like it was with, I've got to here pull up on my old emails, but it looks like it was Henderson County Regional Fair Park. And, so we have multiple parties in Henderson County Master Gardner. So I'll look at the signature, that may be another good point.
What was the, what was the date?
The one that signed off on this, so I think you're going to need the Fair Park Board's approval on that agreement also, in addition to Henderson County Master Gardner.
What was the date of that email? When did we do that? 18, 19?
It was 2018. See if I can, if I've got it in there. Unfortunately, all of the, the one in mine are blank, I don't have the signed copy, I just have the draft, and I don't know the date. It was 2018, because the years filled in.
Okay. Well, what we'll do is, we can go ahead and bless it here, contingent upon the, the contract revisions, give us time to bring it out, because I, I couldn't find anything on it previously.
Okay.
Or we would have had that in the, the actual backup, so.
And it won't be a, it won't be a complicated change either, it'll just be really changing the description of the land, you know, referencing terminating the old contract, changing the new description of the land.
Was, was Spencer here in 2018?
No, he was not.
Because we did this after Spencer came.
Oh, after Sp, oh, the other Spencer.
I don't know if that agreement is far. We did, we, we built this when Spencer was here. He was... He was, he was the ramrod over this.
We was here in 18.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I don't, I came in 17, and I don't remember it being the next year.
Apparently, I found it here, November 20th of 2018, we had it on the agenda as an interlocal agreement for a harvest garden. Apparently, we were voting at that time, too.
I think it was later when we allowed them to build the fence, though, wasn't it?
It, it describes it as 100 by 110, at or near the above described building, and it describes the, I don't know if it's still up there.
Oh, that old.
Storage building that was there that they used, got by the, by the driveway on that side, so.
Ms. Hamfield sent the email then, October 29.
And I do believe you're correct, though, I think it was later that they came back and added the fence. And maybe that's when, when Spencer Perkins was involved, was when they came back for approval to erect a fence around it.
Now, the actual agreement is between the park board and the association, not the commissioner of the court.
Not the commissioner of the court, okay.
So it appears that we blessed it once it had been approved.
And if that's the case, Judge, you could always just, the court could bless it today, subject to the execution of a new agreement between Henderson County Master Gardeners and the Henderson County Fair Park Board.
Thoughts, Court?
I think it'll be the perfect location for them, they'll be able to get in and out without having to, having to come, go through any other channels, they'll have their own key to the gate down there. They can have events at the same time something else is going on at the rodeo, because very rarely is that gate ever used. So, I mean, I think it's a perfect location. And they're gonna be able to, like Howard said, he'd help them move some of that stuff. I move to approve the relocation upon agreement notice from the fair board and the master gardeners association.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the relocation of the activity site at the Henderson County Fair Park, contingent upon our local agreement between the park board and the master gardener association. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Court, and thank you, Clint and Howard Spencer. All right. Let's move to item five, which consider and take action on interlocal agreements between Henderson County and the following entities for conduction of the May 4, 2024 elections, which are the City of Seven Points, City of Maybank, City of Brownsville, City of Chandler, Brown, Gun Barrel City, City of Athens, Athens ISD, Maybank ISD, Camp ISD, and Trinity Valley Community College. Ms. Leckie?
Good morning, Court. Yes, I bring today the interlocal agreements for those entities. There's 10 of them, they've contacted the county and want us to hold their elections for May 4. It's the standard agreement that we've used in the past.
And this will require more than this agenda's signature, so if we do move forward, I'll authorize signatures in our motion. Are there any questions for Ms. Leckie?
Is this all of them that?
Yes, this, there should be all of them, unless there's, this one's that I've been contacted with, so they've had since February to get this in line, so we've been working on this along with everything else, so.
Okay. And this is for the May 4?
May 4. And it is all that word handling, Lock Cabin is doing their own, and Star Harbor is doing their own, so, but there is two that are on their own. But we're, they're helping, I'm helping with training and stuff with them, so.
Just so there's no confusion, we do have, we'll be having one runoff election separate?
We're waiting for the canvas to take place, there's several counties involved in the State Board of Education race, so there may be a runoff at the end of May for the primaries. So we're...
That is two different elections.
Separate, uh huh. Yep, that'll be May 28th, the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Okay. Court questions, comments? Hearing now entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion with all necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the interlocal agreements between Henderson County and the aforementioned entities for the conduction of the May 4, 2024 elections with all authorized, with all necessary signatures. Any further comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Item six is consider and take action on grant agreement for the rural prosecutor's office salary assistance grant, award number IA-285 for the county attorney's office. Ms. Moore?
Good morning, Judge, good morning, commissioners. This is the grant agreement for the rural law enforcement salary assistant program. This is between the county attorney of Henderson and the Texas comptroller. The award amount is $275,000. And this agreement just outlines the terms, reimbursement, reporting compliance.
This court is, we've got a continuation of the SB 22 process. As you remember, we did the sheriff's department portion of it last week. We're doing the county attorney's portion this week.
Correct.
And we may see one more.
Yes.
Coming for the district attorneys. I believe the comptroller's office is wanting to do them one at a time.
One at a time, yeah.
So I know that within two hours after we signed last week, this one came and needed us, so I fully expect the same to take place. Hearing now entertain a motion, with judge's authorization signed.
So I move to approve. I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the grant agreement for the rural prosecutor's office salary assistant grant, award number IA-285 for the county attorney's office with the judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, consider and take action on interlocal agreement between Henderson County and Malakoff ISD for labor and equipment use to overlay approximately 1,000 feet of roadway for the Malakoff High School located in Precinct 1. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, I was contacted a few weeks ago by the superintendent of Malakoff ISD, Mr. Don Layton, wanting Precinct 1 to help with labor and equipment on a couple pre-existing roads they had, one to their ag barn and one to another building they had. And we'll just be using equipment and labor from Precinct 1 and the material will be paid for by the Malakoff ISD. It's only about 1,000 feet. And I have the minutes attached from the school board meeting.
Questions?
The county attorney's office has looked it over.
Questions for the commissioner? Hearing now entertain a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve an interlocal agreement between Henderson County Precinct 1 and Malakoff ISD for labor and equipment use to overlay and blade approximately 1,000 feet of roadway located at Malakoff High School with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the interlocal agreement between Henderson County and Malakoff ISD for labor and equipment use to overlay approximately 1,000 feet of roadway for Malakoff High School located in Precinct 1 with the county commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Item eight, consider and take action, excuse me, consider and take action to accept shady trail into Henderson County Precinct 2 annual road maintenance program. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge, back in, I guess, 2022, the Hidden Hills Harbor subdivision asked me to look into this, them taking in this, or us taking in this road. We had, part of it is in, in our maintenance program, and that picture you had right there, Judge. And it stops right there and turns to the left and goes waterside and changes names, but that six tenths of a mile was not previously done, so they went out and had a contractor pull the ditches, install 15-inch culvert, reinstall 15-inch by 20 culverts, and hot-mixed it and overlaid it. And it is now time to, those pictures were taken Friday, the last two, and it's time to, that their two-year maintenance that they've done is up for us to set it into the road maintenance program.
They've completed their two years, given it was November 21 that we brought them into the program, and this is finally settled.
Yeah, I thought both of them were supposed to, I've got another one that'll be coming in, but I thought this one was supposed to be in March, but it was supposed to be in November of 2023.
Court questions for the commissioner?
And I was, I stand up to...
Yeah, it's...
Whenever you want, I'll check it.
Yep. Those, the last two pictures that you see are what, the, it was taken Friday, and the drainage works well, and they've done everything that we could, we've asked of them. Doing the ditches, replacing every one of those culverts through there, and it looks
Any further discussion? entertain a motion?
Judge, I'm moved that we accept shady trail, .06 tenths of a mile into the Henderson County Precinct 2 annual road maintenance.
I'll second the motion.
Did you say .06 or .6?
Um, sorry, .6.
.6, okay. Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to accept .6 tenths of a mile of shady trail into the Henderson County Precinct 2 annual road maintenance, under county road maintenance. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item nine, consider and take action on the release and indemnification agreement for the Henderson County Adopt a Road program. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, we've had some constituents come forward on our Adopt a Road program, and ran it through the county attorney's office, and he looked over the stuff and recommended that we probably get a, this release agreement done and signed by each participant that participates in the program, just to kind of release the county community incidences that have occurred.
Mr. County Attorney, any input?
Now, he came to me with the, the program, and the only thing that I saw is I said we probably would want to have participants sign off on indemnifying agreement, so it's just something I put together for that.
And this is able to be used by all four precincts, correct?
All four precincts, yes, sir.
Court questions, comments? Hearing now entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the release and indemnification agreement for the Henderson County Adopt a Road program.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the release and indemnification agreement for Henderson County Adopt a Road program as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item 11, is consider and take action to set a public hearing on request of posting a 30 mile an hour speed limit on county roads 3413?
You skipped one.
Did I skip one? Excuse me, I apologize. Item 10, consider and take action on applications for Henderson County Adopt a Road program from Loden Farms, County Road 41511, Lawson Family, County Road 4319, and Huckabee Family, CR 4201, all located in Precinct 4. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, these are the three constituents that's come forward wanting to adopt a road for Adopt a Road program. They've turned in their applications, and what this does is it identifies the roads that they want to adopt for a two-year period, and I think it says in our deal that they would pick them up by, I think, maybe two to...
Three.
Three times a year. At least three times a year is what's in the agreement.
Says four.
Is it four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But even once a quarter probably then, pick, pick, pick up trash in the county. We furnish an orange trash bag and a vest to them for safety reasons, and then after they call us and notify us that they're gonna pick up the trash, we'll go out on Monday morning, they just leave the orange bags on the side of the road, and I'll send guys out to pick up their bags on Monday morning.
Questions, Court? Hearing now entertain a motion on the free agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the applications for the Henderson County Adopt a Road program for Loden Farms, for County Road 41511, the Lawson Family, for County Road 4319, and the Huckabee Family, for County Road 4201, located in Precinct 4.
I'll second the motion.
With the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll still second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the aforementioned applications for the Henderson County Adopt a Road program with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion?
I have something, there, three, two of them say four times a year, and one of them says three times a year. The Huckabee say three times a year.
And I believe that they can be adjusted accordingly. Now, you agree with that, Mr. County Attorney? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Now, item 11, consider and take action to set a public hearing on the request of posting 30 mile an hour speed limit on county roads 3413, 4101, and 41514, located in Precinct 4. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, uh, uh, these are three roads, the three mentioned roads are needing the speed limit signs put up. One of them we've already done, I think we've got a road number that was entered wrong, so we're gonna redo this one along with the other two. They're for County Road 40, I mean, 3413, 4101, and 41514.
Questions for the commissioner? We're looking at what date, April 2nd, 1, 2, 3?
Yeah, I think, did we do it last time for 21 or 28 days? I think we done 28.
Maybe done 28.
Before.
And do it the 9th?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the request of posting 30 mile an hour speed limit on county roads 3413, 4101, and 41514 for April the 9th at 9:05
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to set a public hearing on a request for posting of a 30 mile an hour speed limit on the aforementioned county roads located in Precinct 4 on April the 9th at 9:05 a.m. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 12, consider and take action to reappoint Julie Smith to the Henderson County Hospital Authority Board, Place 2, for a three-year term extended, excuse me, ending December 31, 2026. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, we received a letter from Martin Bennett from the Henderson County Hospital Authority Board that Julie Smith was wanting to be reappointed in, for Place 2, so we're here to accept that.
Okay, questions? entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Julie Smith to the Henderson County Hospital Authority Board, Place 2, for a three-year term ending December the 31st of 2026.
Authority Board, place two, for a three-year term ending December the 31st of 2026.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tully to reappoint Julie Smith to the Henderson County Hospital Authority Board, place number two, for a three-year term ending December 31, 2026. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously.
I think we got a complete board now.
Yay. Item 13, receive financial reports. Court, we have the financial reports for the, all the judiciary. These are available for viewing by the public at the court and the county clerk's office. If there's no further discussions, we'll move on. Item 14, is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts of cash sheet.
Yes, Court, so we have the election payrolls. I have two of them for y'all, one of them's for the first week, the other one's for the second week, and then we'll have the one more coming, and it'll be a little smaller than these two here. Also, on the first one there that's got March the 5th for the date, I need to change that to February the 24th, because that was the ending date on that one, and everything else should be good.
Court questions concerning both? entertain a motion.
So moved to approve as amended.
I'll say.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the voter payrolls for February and March as amended. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Item 15, consider and take action on submitted contracts, which I don't believe we had any. Item 16 is consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. Where? Precinct 4. Commissioner.
Yes, Court, I've got a utility line activity application for Charter Spectrum to install 38,861 foot of underground fiber optic and 100 volts within the right-of-way of County Road 4303, 4304, 4305, 4307, 4308, 4309, 4317, 4318, 4319, 4320, and 4359.
Questions?
You should have just named the roads that wasn't affected.
Yes. Questions for the commissioner? entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the utility line activity for Charter Spectrum on the mentioned roads located in Precinct 4.
Authorization.
With the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the right-of-way agreement with Charter Spectrum for the installation of fiber optic cable along the aforementioned county roads located in Precinct 4 with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Oppose? Passes 41 to the opposing. Item 17, consider and take action on submitted budgets. Has month? Budget amendments. Nope, none of them, sorry. Item 18, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, sir. We have two sets. Our first set is fiscal year 2024, ending in $830,061.41.
Mr. Spidey, questions?
She answered, Ron, this morning. Thank you.
Commissioner Tully?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
I have no questions, but since Chuck can mention, I noticed the water bill was a little bit lower again this month.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, at our, our last meeting that we had with McKinstry, just off the cuff, we're seeing on average, I believe it was about $10,000 a month decrease in that bill so far.
$10,000?
$10,000.
Yeah.
And a decrease in our water bill at the judicial complex. Sheriff, you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, it's, I'm pleased with the results. It's been a great program.
Because with the higher population that you have in jail right now, it's usually a lot higher than what we're paying.
We're reaching the population now of in jail that we have the same, probably since Orange County had the hurricane.
Mhm.
And that's been 19, somewhere around there.
Yes, sir.
So we've probably got about 50 or 60 more people incarcerated right now than we had on average the last 34 years.
Well, it is, first couple of months, we're seeing regular terms on, which we thought that we would, so I didn't necessarily, I said judicial complex, justice, anyway, we're proud of it so far, and it's also made it where you can regulate the actual usage inside of the facility that we didn't have before.
We don't have it, but we do have the option now. I haven't had to use the parks, but we do have the option, so we're coming to it.
Any further comments? entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $830,061.41 as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the 2024 bills in the amount of $830,061.41. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously.
We have fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $8,295.15.
Court, questions concerning the 2023? Hearing done, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 bills in the amount of $8,295.15 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the '23 bills in the amount of $8,295.15 as presented. All those in favor passes unanimously. Item 19, consider and take action on submitted plans? Item 20, open and considered bids, looks like we've got a couple of them today.
Good morning. Precinct 3 is looking to purchase a few pieces of equipment. On the first bid, it's for a haul truck and end dump trailer. The specs can be seen in the bid packet, but for the haul truck, it's a 1997 or newer is what he's looking for with a 10-speed manual transmission, under 395, 395,000 miles on the trailer, 93 or newer, with the empty weight of 12,400. And the dates that I propose is, if approved today, the first ad would be this Saturday, March 16th. Second ad would be next Saturday, March 23rd. We would open the bid April 2nd, 2024, and bring it back for award on April 9th.
Court questions? Comment?
There's vehicles that we needed to Precinct, and I thought it'd be better if we tried to buy the used vehicles and purchase new vehicles just for the amount of time that they're used every year. We had to have them, but we don't use them enough to justify new.
Okay.
And they're pre-dead. They're all pre-dead. Pre-dead instead of some of this stuff.
Any questions for the commissioner? Hearing done, entertain a motion on the two bids.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the bid request as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously.
The second bid packet is for a water truck. Again, all specs can be found in the bid packet, but we're looking for a 1992 or newer with a $4,000, $4,000 gallon tank, prefer hydraulic PTO pump, non-speed manual, under 100,000 miles.
Commissioner.
Science time. Our water truck is, the tangents just about completely rusted out, and it's been fixed several times, and I just want the money to try to fix it again, and try to find us a new one that's sweet and placey.
Questions for the commissioner? entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the bid for water truck, bid request.
I'll say with his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the invitation for bid for the FY 2024 water truck bid. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item 21, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner McCam to adjourn at 9:59. Is there any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously. We are adjourned. We'll take about 10 minutes and then come back for our archival workshop. Thank you for being with us.